Second meeting of December. We'll have a, we're going to have a third meeting as we're cleaning up bills. But anyway, if you would, join me in the pledge of allegiance. I'm sorry, I got long winded. You're not ready?
Yeah, it's fine.
We do the pledge without recording?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the representative of this nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
So then I was out trying to find something that was bigger than this type, and I found a lot of...
What you do or box over here. This is Beth.
I know, it's not really there. I don't know about that, but I know it's just same goes on.
Move down to the agenda here. We have the minutes of November eighteenth, regular meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve both minutes.
One minute, second to go into it. Eighteenth and the second?
Yes, I was the president on the second, but I read them and I make a motion to approve.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of both, November eighteenth and December second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. We have payroll claims with period ending November thirtieth of nineteen for two hundred fourteen thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirty-six cents.
Motion to approve payroll for eleven thirty.
I'll second the motion. Okay, I've got a motion and a second to approve this payroll docket. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. This is world fifteen, sixteen. Early claims.
Bless you.
Yeah, early claims amount for seventeen thousand eight thirty-nine forty-two.
Motion to approve. Oh, second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Thank you.
And we have approve a settlement claim for nine thousand one hundred dollars. Oh, there we go. It's in there in the right order, I missed it. Nine thousand one hundred dollars. Order of state.
I thought that was just part of settlement that I have to send down with each spring and each fall. So that's one portion of settlement.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Now, I haven't got them all mixed up now. Approve advanced draws for twenty nineteen settlement in the amount of four...
That is for, if you remember, the state board of council wants us to have you sign off claim forms, because some of these weren't signed by either myself or the treasurer, so we're getting caught up. This is for the three, three schools that got an advanced draw.
Yeah, this is for the three school corporations that don't have put names on here.
No, they didn't ask for advanced draw.
I see.
Delphi has to get that home.
Okay, so what this is, we got one million nine hundred ninety-six thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and twenty-six cents. Delphi Community Schools gets one million one hundred thirty-two thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Carroll gets seven hundred fifteen thousand two ninety-one forty, and Rossville gets a hundred forty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-eight cents.
They've already received their money, so they have already deducted from what they get from us in settlement money to get to do that.
Okay. Did you make a motion on this?
That's a big one.
Yeah, I know. We just cut the schools out, we have all kinds of money. Still that jail.
The advanced girls.
Motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
I think it's the biggest one out of them.
I think it's the biggest one out of them. One million nine hundred thousand.
Wait till you get the real sum.
Where the money goes is to the schools. Approve replacement checks in the amount of seventy-nine eighty.
Next two are for checks that the department has put the wrong finger on. So they're more or less corrections.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve both pledges.
Yeah.
Okay. Got one for seventy-nine eighty and one for one eighty-four oh five. Those are easy after the last one.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Approve the general election checks in the amount of two oh one eighty-five. Got two of those, yeah. Yeah, the general election of thirty-two eighty-seven twenty-nine. Do you vote for those?
Yeah, motion two.
Motion, both, aye. Second, all in favor, say aye. Let's start, let me run one quick here.
Yes, it is. Last one, nine minutes.
And first up on our agenda is Dell Stewart. If you would, sir, go up there to the microphone and get you recorded. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner, Charlie today.
All right.
I'm here to speak about a mobile home that is positioned right next to our house on Horseshoe Bend, number one, two, 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 four, West Horseshoe Bend Road.
Let me write this down here. One, two, two, four.
Three twos. One, two, 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 four, West Horseshoe Bend Road. Three twos.
Three twos, okay. What you do? Okay?
This mobile home has been there for, and I'm a recent resident, five, six years, but I'm told it's been there forty, fifty years. Back in the day, they would come on the weekends, have a good time. The name of the family is Bowler, B-O-L-L-E-R. There are some other Bowlers living on Horseshoe Bend at this time. But this was the, this was the home or the residence of the father and mother. He has since, is deceased. She, I understand, is alive, but is quite elderly, not in good health. A son, Keith Bowler of Coalbacks, is purchasing the home, what I understand, or the property, on contract from his mother. I've been there, like I said, for five or six years. The only activity I've seen is brother Bob will come out once in a while and fish from the bank. Keith and Bob came out to clean the property up one time. After I asked the health department to take a look at the situation, they did contact him. He did come out, cleaned it up one time. It almost killed me. The rest of the time, I take care of the property. I mow what grass there is, I rake the leaves, I burn the leaves, I wash more, I, I, I pressure wash the thing, get the mold off of it, I clean the roof off, I trim a couple of shrubs. And if it's done, I do it. And this property sits from me to the gentleman right here next to our house. My question is, is there anything we can do about having this structure? I, I, I've actually offered to buy the property, and he's turned me down. Too many childhood memories. Well, I'm sure your mother and father are very proud of you for leaving all of those memories in such disrepair. So we are at a point where if we can just get the structure removed, I'd take care of the property gladly. It sits next to two other empty lots at, Technic is last name, but he maintains those perfectly, it's like a park. So if we can have those three lots adjoining, I'll take care of it clean. The entrance, what is basically the entrance to Horseshoe Bend, up dramatically. I've got, I don't know, twenty-five or twenty-six signatures from my closest friends supporting my efforts today. Everyone you talk to is in agreement, something needs to be done. There is one completely dead tree, so I mean, it is one hundred percent dead. And my fear is that it's going to fall on my house. Like I said, the point is, question is, is there anything we can do about this?
Well, are the taxes paid on it?
The taxes are paid, and I've seen that figure, and they are so low, if any lower, you would owe him money. And I understand that abandoned means that you haven't paid the taxes. So, you know, I mean, a child could pay the taxes.
Maybe have to start with the sheriff's department, does the nuisance properly, starts to pay for it, so there will be contact. The health department again, to move in that direction. So I think you have to start with the sheriff's department to do.
Yes.
I did, there's one window in there that's, that's open that drew me to look into it, or not look into it, but, and he advised me that that window's been open since he's lived there.
That's correct.
So it's got mold growing around the window, and it's, I mean, it's just wide open.
There's two of them going in and out.
There's a lot out there, there were two rabbits that come out from underneath, and I don't know what else is on it. Probably the skirting's gone in places, so I mean, it's, it's definitely an issue. I went there and looked at it twice for them.
Just don't make it, just start with the nuisance department. And I'll end up in court.
Okay. Steve's suggestion, start with Ted.
Yes.
Steve's suggestion, start with the sheriff's department. Is that who should start this?
Nuisance property.
It probably fits nuisance. It probably fits unhavability. Has anybody's lived there?
No, sir. Not in years, years and years and years.
I mean,
There is no one.
Probably better if it fits the unhavability than to introduce it properly because of the fact that the window open has got the mold and so forth. So I assume that the health department could say it's not habitable in this present condition.
Is it removed for health?
So it's not necessarily a police issue. I suggested to the health department or the health board some time ago that they could, they have, there is a statute, they don't have to adopt any special statute. They, they need procedures, and they either need the health officer or a hearing officer to actually conduct a hearing, have somebody like the agency director come and have Terry come give information and then sign a, the health officer signs the order. And that order gives them a certain amount of time to bring it up to your capital condition or to, to raise it. And if they don't, then, then it comes, come back to the commissioners as far as confirmation of it. The health board, work health can take a renovation to the, the health, to the work mission that it is not habitable, it's not been brought up, and then recommend to the work missions that you begin. And then that's what we give into the, to the money part. The money is paid by the governmental agency, and then if there is cost to it, then you may have to commence a lien to be put on property for the cost of remediation and so forth. And then that lien stays with the property unless you file separate lawsuit to propose the lien for the cost. A lot of times, this probably is leave those liens on and tell it transfers, and then it gets paid off. That proceeds to the property that gets transferred. So that's, that's the procedure. I don't think it interferes with sheriff's law enforcement's. Yeah. I really think the health department needs to initiate it though, the health, health statutes that state in the, our ministry, the health department and the health officer. We have, we're the property, but the, the, the.
I don't know how that one's coming along very well, but they've said they're going to remove the garage right away.
I have neither. There were a couple of people that asked me to mention that, and I said, well, that's not on the agenda. But this is another point of contention, that the garage is gone, that the house and the tree are still there, and Lord knows how many cats are in that structure. There are maybe hundreds.
Really?
Yeah.
Must be enough for your survival on that.
No mice in the area, though. Probably. Okay, so the way that I understand it from Ted here, and we're getting this in a lot of different places of the county. There's one right now, more on the town of Camden. Trouble is, the town of Camden wants us to take care of it, and it's actually in a corporate area.
The other thing is, there's, there's several statutes possibly potentially in place. You have to look at each, kind of circumstances of each case to know which statute applies. Cities, towns, and counties all have the availability of the unsafe building law. And that's what I mentioned to the health department, Camden situation. And most incorporated towns that I'm familiar with have adopted the unsafe building law, have authority to condemn properties in their, in their jurisdictions. So the county is, even though the county has jurisdiction for certain things within, even an ordinance is that affects cities and towns, but when it comes to streets and other conditions and so forth, those are regulated by the municipality of the city or town. So you have to look at the situation. Now, the health department, if it, if it is strictly a health issue, which to me, this sound like it's a health issue, it doesn't sound like the structure itself is falling out, it's not threatening to collapse on, on something. Maybe a tree, but that's not the structure. It doesn't fit the unsafe building law, but it, it does fit senior needle, you have a delivery issue. And health department issues that.
I feel like I mentioned that there is no well on the property. He shared the well with the previous owner of my property, and apparently there was a falling out. I kind of cut him off. There's no electricity, I've got to, and Lord only knows, not the setting system.
Pipe to the river.
I'm sorry?
Somebody pipe to the river.
Oh, I wouldn't doubt it.
Well, I guess our, our, we have to advise you to, to go down and see the health department. They know that we support them before we clean up like this. Probably because of the care you've taken of the property, it hasn't come to their notice.
You know, my wife made that point, and if I hadn't believed that you'd come by, and I, I'm not used to living in those conditions, and I've been up with it for all these years, primarily since I've been there, I'm going to, I'm going to deal with it.
One of the first things they noticed was tall, tall, tall grass.
Well, why can't it grow?
No.
I don't want to.
Let's start, try to work on it the other way first. We appreciate you coming to us, and we'll keep track of it, and please go down and see, it's actually my wife, and she got it in the health department.
Can I give this to someone?
Yeah, bet, I'd like to have that.
The names of...
And I'll make sure that I... She, she has copies of that too.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Coroner Kristen Ene. Good morning, Kristen.
Good morning. I was just going to give you an update on the van. My partner, Commissioner Hilton, he gave me a number of the lady in Delphi, and she gave me an estimate of at least five hundred to clean it. And I have a call for service master, but they haven't returned my call yet.
Where's the last one?
Service master, I have a call out for a quote from them, but they haven't called me back yet. So then next year's budget, I only have three hundred in the vehicle maintenance, so we'll have to see what, what the law's doing.
Where you have the van at now? Still there. Take it to the floor ambulance truck.
After, after cleaning it.
Okay. I was going to say, she said don't clean it until we have someone to take it, so.
How about Sam I am and bring her? I think he might go with the...
Okay.
Sam's perfect. So what do you do? Yeah.
Does he, do you know, he's spec, she says she specializes in mold, so I, I want to, I told her I want to make sure that we get the air system cleaned out, and, because she said even us coughing and sneezing, we'll just spread it.
Right. But let's get it done the way that you want to do it.
Just the ambulance garage.
And we leave it plugged in and fingered.
Yeah.
And somebody do it, and start free once in a while.
I know we talked about the battery too, and when I had it checked before, it was not the battery. It's obviously something inside it that's pulling the juice, which is what, yeah.
You can put the call switch on it. What'd you say, the cost that she...
She said that, that at a minimum, it'll be at least five hundred. But she, without seeing it, and I had, we'd been able to get it over there.
The heater and all that stuff.
And all the equipment, and she didn't know if all the equipment would be okay, be okay to be cleaned, or if we'll have to pitch it, or... I do have a gurney, a new gurney that Terry Moore from Burlington, the town marshal's, has been keeping for him that we have just downstairs, because ours now have mold that possibly look it into, see if we want to buy from him. It's nice, you know, been used. It would give us at least one new one, and it, like I said, the wheels aren't as much, but we had trouble with it on the last call, even.
We have a lot of issues with the van besides the mold.
Um, we never, they're, they're, still doesn't have the airbag working.
That steering wheel or the side?
The, I don't know if this is airbag system. And they checked it out when we had it, but I didn't choose to fix it because it was going to be expensive, and I, we, I was taking many steps.
Right.
So I didn't want to get it all one time, but I know all of that.
We haven't forgotten about it, we're just trying to figure it out.
No, I know, I know.
She's worked in a couple of buildings.
Yes.
Mike sent us a report, about four places, basically.
Four facilities.
I'm the only one that came back with me, like Camden, just a little. I thought Camden was Camden. Probably, taking a lot of runs and up to eight or nine. My suggestion would be just tear down wherever we're at, and put up your, I think, FBI building, with a gravel floor for now, just where you can store your vehicles, some of your equipment, and later on, maybe add the concrete, and what else we need, and I think we can do a decent building for under fifteen. She wants to go, but we got to get her somewhere. Unless we put her in one ambulance garage, like the air traffic in the back, like I suggested before.
Sure, real bad. What's wrong with that?
That left over here and stuff like that.
Yeah.
You know, John shot it down because of your degrees of, of, of effect. And all of this is a story.
I don't know about it.
It's full of junk.
I haven't been in there for a couple of years.
Still, we still in the sites. Oh, the garage and stuff. Yeah. It's going to be sad inside themselves. All right, well, this ambulance garage here and that, I remember I had the drive through, you pull in one end, we drive out the other.
Make sure that's clean, though, where you're.
I've been threatened, I told sheriff on the unit, I'll just clean it out. That's their storage area down there. We can probably make that work for what you need. I know the most of the tracks are, and then Mike's over there, and he's going to slap me later, but, yeah. A quick, easy place to put you and store your stuff. Long drive for you.
Well, that's the only thing, if Steve or I, which are the two main ones that go, if you got Burlington call or something on that side, you're talking a good forty-five minutes just to get it back and forth.
Is everything available on both of them?
I know the fire department doesn't have anything. Uh, I'd have to think about that.
There's a garage that's been for a rest for a long time, but, yeah. Nice new garage. I think it's like a two car garage. So come from the north going south, it's the first street that goes back and right on the bend down there. Down towards the cemetery.
Oh.
I don't know if it's taller, I would think it'd be taller for Vandy.
But I believe this here in Delphi, probably big enough to do what you wanted to do if we decided to do autopsies here in town.
I don't know if we could with it being that close to the store, and I don't know if we can store that close to the track. I mean, that's a big, that, I don't know.
Store and bodies, that goes to the track.
I would say no, but...
I haven't read anything into the encode, who can?
Been a few years since the train came through that, right?
Right here?
I say just for now, get that van cleaned and get it going.
That's what?
And put it in the ambulance garage and floor. Sorry, Doug.
Okay.
Go get her.
I'll try to call service master again and see what, those were the only two I knew of. I, somebody had mentioned Zipard, I called them, and they don't do it, so.
There used to be a Dan Smith off three hundred north that used to do mold cleanup.
So before you do this, do you have money in your pocket?
That's, that's what I was saying, but I know I'm on the council agenda too, right? This year, I'm, I've got like fifteen dollars in that, but next year, I only have three hundred, so. so.
Do you have money to transfer?
Now.
That's what.
I have to see what my, see otherwise now.
Or next year.
Well, it's a county vehicle.
I've got two places cut, so I don't know.
Do you need to do an additional?
But if we still have money in our main, that's fine, that one for the vehicle that, Doug, Doug. I think we can use some of it since it's a county vehicle. I wanna help her out, she needs a van.
Yeah, we're just more worried about our health than how that lady said to us.
I understand that, but you know, we're at hope that we're at December sixteenth.
Right.
If she doesn't have a quote for, and if we can't have a quote, we need a bill to name Humbert.
And I didn't push it till I knew we had somewhere to take it, cause obviously she said like, like she said, we wouldn't. I didn't wanna clean it and then it'd be right back, but have to pay again.
I think you take it to your hospital, your driver, with your situation.
I don't know that, well, I, we leave, lift the hood up so that because of the charger, I, I don't know that outside would be good right at the moment if we don't have it, a way to plug it in otherwise.
And if you put it outside, if it freezes, it might freeze the mold. I, I'm just asking, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, she just said that the conditions of the, you know, when it gets nice out, it obviously grows, is what she was telling me.
Right. Being inside that building, you have mold anyway.
And that's why, I mean, right now it is what it is, it's just I didn't wanna do any cleaning till we knew where we were gonna take it, just cause I, we would have another bill.
Well, we'll need to tell service bro, you need a bill to clean this and get it done and get it here as soon as possible. So we can get it out of there and maybe I can speak to Dr. Paul and knock on the van.
I have nothing for the agenda. Yeah, I said wow.
Well, tell us about the roads today. Did they, you have much power with them?
Um, not really, do you? I just gave you a quick recap. The boys came in yesterday, two hours, got all their clothes on, got everything ready, took their trucks home. And then also, Ivan huge, and can't call it pre-treating, but pre-spread all the hills and everything with materials so we'd be ready. Biggest problem is that with that thin amount, a lot of the traffic just packed this snow down. And the speeders heading through Indiana Packer have littered the fields along one hundred north and by three fifty west on end. Took a couple fences out, took a, uh, help won't fall out, but just not driving very smart at all. But we've been out, and I think the roads are, the best you can do is where they're at, was a thin amount of snow. You can't really plow it, and all we can really do is kind of creek the intersections and some of the bad spots. But we've been out there and I think, I think they're halfway decent, but you gotta use your head and slow down a little bit.
I think it snow like that, once you take it off, it leaves like a slush and it freezes faster and makes an ice. That's what they did in town of Camden, it's just like on the Cajun River, there's a little snow on.
It's, it's difficult, you don't have enough to really mess with and kinda warm enough to melt it, but pretty soon it's gonna freeze tonight. Pardon? People's.
Just take a deep, take precaution and they drive.
No, they leave a little earlier and drive a little slower.
I saw three off the, on the four lane, block two, the Verus, semi tractor, two vehicles I saw.
We're looking forward to a good year next year. Yeah, I think it's been a very good year this year.
It has been, thank you.
Did you get ahold of Reese Riley about that road condition you said you weren't happy with?
Tom Buck was in, Tom Buck and I go way back, I mean, a long time ago. And he was in, talked to me, he said, uh, just get together in the spring, and I'll get you winter and everything, and drive the roads, uh, he gave me the tells and all this, but we're gonna go do a little bit. He said there are a few things we can do to improve these spots here and there.
Are they putting it on us, or are they gonna do it themselves?
No, they, they'll do it themselves.
Okay. Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. We're running a little bit of a head start here now. Construction Control Incorporated, construction manager jail contract. Good morning.
Good morning. We're, we're on our third version.
Third version.
Third time's charm.
We hope so. Uh, I think, and probably without saying it, that this contract is Fulton County contract, which was a version of this that got the council going left or right, whatever. There are certain things in this contract that I don't certainly believe in, not the least of which is they set the contingency themselves and they get to keep all the contingency and things like that. This does guarantee the price, although I question the meaning foremost of guaranteeing the price. So I think that my last rev, we're gonna guarantee the price. Uh, but at the same time, much like this contract, we'll set the contingency amount as part of that guaranteed price, which is what these guys did here. But if you don't feel that the contingency is appropriate, then you could so say, and we'll face the GMP law. In other words, what this contract does is it's really guarantee the price, and we're also gonna set the contingency the way we will set it and people here will set it. Of course, they equate the devil out of the thing, make sure the guarantee falls within the forever. Uh, and we're certainly willing to do that, but, uh, I don't wanna do it in such a way that the missions don't have the opportunity to have a second look at that contingency. And that's why I put that language in there. Really, we've only changed two areas in the contract in the last version. Uh, I'm not sure what those articles are, Ted, but they're, uh, one's a guarantee and one is a contingency paragraph. Other than that, it seems that's everyone's variation too. But the council seem to be aware of the guarantee, in spite of what I'm saying, it's not much.
What is the contingency in this here?
Where is it?
Okay, where is it and what is it?
Well, in this contract, it's, they list two contingencies. First of all, they say they'll guarantee the price once they have all the bids in. Okay, well, no matter how sure, how meaningful that is. But at the same time, in guaranteeing that price, they'll also, they, not you, they, will set the contingency amount, which is an allowance for whatever may come down the road. They also say in this contract that that, that specific contingency cannot be used in change orders. I'm not sure what you'd use it for. Then they've wanted to say that there's another contingency that we're gonna build in, it's called an allowance contingency, with each of the contractors that have bid the job. And that's where they'll take the change order in time. It goes on to say that at the end of the job, that bigger contingency that they establish, GMP, they get to keep all the money, let's say, a lot. Of course, I, they just can do, keep the price. So in our case, we guarantee the job once the bids are in, just like this did. Uh, the difference, well, it's another difference, but the biggest difference is, I don't set the contingency, but if you feel the contingency is inappropriate, value wise, then most likely it would be, if this would be, then the GMP would come on at that time after bids. If that's your call, I'm on it.
Paul, you have any questions?
So, pardon me, but, so we don't know what the contingency is yet, is that what you're saying?
None.
Okay.
Nor do they.
Okay. So, so you, you feel like this is probably gonna cost the county more money than the other grant?
No, what it, what it would do on my behalf, I would make more money if I use this contract.
How much more would you make?
This contract says, and I will quote specifically, it says, article two three quarter, prepare the construction manager's guaranteed maximum price proposal. The construction manager shall include its contingency, its, meaning their contingency, to the construction manager's exclusive use. That's not your use, contractor's, their specific use, to cover those costs considered reimbursable as caused, but not included in change orders. What's it there for there? Change order goes in the GMP. Let it get more complicated. Page after page, not so bad. For the actual changes in the work, article five one thirty, that are paid for from a, a contingency allowance, different than the other contingency, this is contingency allowance, built into each subcontractor's contract sum, no mark da da da, for the changes in the work that increases the subcontractor's sum, you'll use this money. So there's actually two contingencies in this contract. One big one that is used for god knows what, and the other one that's individual, each subcontractor who actually pays the change orders. It gets better. Article five point two, owner will not share in any savings below the guaranteed maximum price. So I get the bids. So I get the bids, I guarantee the price, but the price, keep in mind now, it's got the big contingency on it, that it'll be who knows used for what. The individual contingency is going to the subcontractors for change orders, and at the end of the day, whatever left, I get to keep.
And, and that's the same contract that was offered to Paul?
No, 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 no. My contract has components of this, but not that sort of thing, cause that's just ungodly unfair of the company.
And who wrote that?
This is a Garmin contract.
So you're working with Garmin on, on this?
No. This is an example of, of what they're convincing you guys to do. And they do it all on the premise, Paul, of we guarantee the price and take all the risk. They do. They don't bother to tell you about the two different contingencies and they get to keep all the money that's left. And they don't bother to tell you that your three percent fee does not include the manpower at the site, which is the singular biggest cost item on a construction site.
So instead of doing that, you're proposing then, go through what, what you'd like, what's smart for the county to do, Jack, in your opinion?
First of all, you guys wanna guarantee, right? I'm happy to give you that. But with the guarantee goes certain other issues as it did in this one. It means that you're not gonna get the guarantee until the bids are in. That's what they have here.
That's okay, though. I mean, that's normal.
I'm sorry, I can't relate here, but, so what, what are you, what, and I, I don't wanna monopolize your meetings, so.
Go ahead and ask whatever your hands are.
Uh, you were saying that, that the construction manager at risk controls the, or, are you indicating that the construction manager at risk gets the balance of the contingency fund?
Right here. Article five point two.
What contract is that?
This is the Fulton counter, contract with Garmin.
The Fulton County contract?
With Garmin.
Okay.
Which I can only assume that you would eventually see this version as well.
Right. Um, so that's a negotiated point, and that, that was negotiated differently in Hancock, Hendricks, and Marion, so.
To some degree, perhaps.
Yeah, well, yeah.
But the point is, is that nobody's gonna give you a guarantee until those bids are in. Do you agree with that?
Well, yeah, I mean, they could give us a guarantee at any point, but it's gonna be a better guarantee the later you go, when the bids.
Yeah, when the bids are in.
Well, it's, it seems logical, if I'm gonna step on a thirteen million dollar potential bullet, then I'm gonna make darn sure that that bullet isn't aimed at me. And the quickest way to do that is two things. Do it after the bid is received.
Right.
Get that big nut, and then put a big enough nut in the various categories, contingencies, to ice the deal on my behalf. And what's ever left, I get to keep. Great deal, you can get away with it. And this percentage fee doesn't include manpower at the site. Singular biggest item on a construction site.
I'm skeeched again, I'm sorry.
Could be hundreds of thousands, that item alone.
The manpower to, to overlook and.
At the site.
At the site. And that's what you're offering, you're.